Good morning, everyone. It is November eighteenth, twentieth, thank you. I will call this commission meeting to order. This is a public hearing. If you'd all join us and stand for the flag of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia states, law, nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal, just as far.
All right. Thank you for joining us this morning. We are having a public hearing concerning safety needs of three of our departments. Okay. All right. We have a policy, and it's the civility policy for Broadwater County. Broadwater County is officially following Robert's rules of order. Purpose of this policy is to open Broadwater County public meetings to a wider range of citizens. We realize we have a fiscal and fiduciary responsibility to conduct county business as effectively and efficiently as possible for all Broadwater County citizens. Commission meetings are recorded and are on YouTube, so please state your full name prior to public comment for the record. Any separate conversations need to be removed from the meeting and conducted outside. Outbursts will not be tolerated. Public comment will be prior to the meeting, but the entire meeting is public comment today, at least for the agenda item. We will not have a time for public comment. It's usually limited to three minutes because this is a public hearing. We do ask, though, that you keep your comments to county business in today's agenda. The chair may call on any informational witnesses. Of course, you all are that today, and any and all comments will be directed to the board chair or presiding officer. Lane is ill today. So, the first thing I want to just mention is that this is not a public hearing on recycling. This is a public meeting about the steps needed to take in order to start a process of possibly purchasing a new county building. It's, of course, not a new building. It's one that's been around for a long time. It would be new to the county. Issues are overcrowding and need for space, safety issues, and legal issues. So with that, I guess, first to start, there's some paperwork here. I will ask that the department supervisors each get a copy, and there should be enough copies for everyone here if you would like. They are the laws that dictate the process that we're following. We'll have a public meeting prior to the first step, which is giving an appraisal. What is this building appraisal? What is its value? There will be a second meeting to, after receiving that value, do we move forward and make an offer at that point? What will that offer be? There'll be another meeting after that offer is either rejected or approved to follow through. So there's a number of meetings that we'll be having on this subject. So today is only about step one. Do we move forward and get an appraiser to appraise the building? So with that, any public comment? Tim, please state your full name for the record.
Tim, I would like to just go on record and say that I do believe that looking at the Perry Building is certainly the option, but if we're going to eliminate the need from discussion today, I think it's important to point out that we have other options that are available, and logistically and geographically. I think they need to be considered as you move forward. I mean, there are just a lot of issues here that need to be brought back into the equation as you move forward, because the taxpayers aren't putting the money up for this expansion, understanding needs, but also understanding we need to maintain some fiscal responsibility here.
Appreciate your comment. You haven't been to a couple of meetings. We have actually investigated a series of other options. Brian, do you want to speak to that? The Gold West study that was done?
Great West.
Great West, thank you.
Madam Chair, I've been to those meetings, and so we never did ever follow up on any further things than what the engineering firm did present forward, and that was generalizations. There never was any firm process looked at any other options.
I, again, appreciate your comment, Tim. You're all. The proposals that were put forth were put forth by the board members and the employee supervisor at Solidways. The engineering firm then investigated in full four options. We did actually hash through each of those options, and this option actually has come out as the least expensive, the most fiscally responsible of the different options. It's certainly not the end-all-to-be-all, and that's been discussed also at two of the previous public hearings. This is public hearing number three. So this has been well hashed out, and we have looked at all angles. But again, thank you for your comment.
Respectfully disagree.
Okay.
I do not believe that this has been anything but a dog and pony show with planning in place. Thank you.
Thank you. You too. Any other public comment on this subject? Okay. We have a letter from a citizen who I will read into the record. Dear Commissioners, I am in favor of the purchase of the Perry Building and lots. It is of good value and basically ready for use by three departments that urgently need space. Other options that have been explored require months, if not years, to have space ready for use and are more costly. Thank you for your wise decision on this matter. And, Rouser, Toston, Montana. And that is the only written comment for this particular meeting that we received. So...
Apparently, I just, Herb Arbright just called me, and he sent the letter. I thought he brought it. I don't know. But anyway, he's got a letter in on this, on this Perry Building.
Okay.
And he doesn't think, his idea is we shouldn't be moving on it. One thing, he would go along with, like, a year lease or something like that, see how things work out. And he asked me if I checked what the tax had been bringing in on it. And I says, I hadn't. Well, he did. It was $2,400 a year. And he said, according to his figures, that just about cost a taxpayer about $100 a year, because that was taken off the tax rule. Because he said there's probably, and you had answers, Doug, if there's, he said there's probably 2,100 actual taxpayers in the county.
Okay. And he said that would cost each taxpayer $100?
That's what he figured, yeah.
Last year, when we brought in $400,000 for the school levy, it cost each taxpayer about $50. So I think his...
And he could be off on that amount, but I mean, that's his...
Drastically off.
But anyway, there's 2,400, so that would be lost.
Yeah. No, that's, as far as each taxpayer in the county making up 24,000, that's...
2,400.
Or 2,400, that's, that's not going to be much for each taxpayer to, I mean, I would have to find a fund that has close to that amount, which would be hard to do. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a small amount in the big scheme of things. It really is.
His big concern was that there's 24,000 would be in there, and he is not in favor of the county purchasing that building.
All right. Mr. Austin.
Tom Austin. I'd like to make a comment. I moved here in '04, '05, and the subdivision I live in was agriculture prior to that. And you can probably address what agriculture land pays for acre versus the subdivision. I paid $2,200 property taxes, and there's 60-some other homes that have been added to the county road. So I think that was, you know, to lose $2,200 because we want to be safe and have our county employees be able to work in a safe manner is a small amount of money, because it's more than made up by the number of new homes in this county.
Thank you. Any other? Linda.
My name is Linda Huth. Franklin, I think you just said that he said it would be $2,400, and there's 2,100 taxpayers in the county.
I believe that's, I know that here, I think it says the total is 2368, not 2,400.
And I think you said that would be $100 per taxpayer.
That's the way I understood it.
That would be a dollar, a little more than a dollar. $1 times 2,100 is $2,100. It would not be $100 per taxpayer.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Welcome. We're having just a public hearing on whether to get an appraiser to find out the price of the Perry Building. It's just a step in the law that we have to follow. It's not necessarily a decision today, just hearing what people think about just finding out what it's worth. Any other comments or questions? John.
John Hohn. I think the, one of the things is that, again, the Perry Building is very reasonably priced compared to other buildings. Heard about a shop that's put up in Dots, and it was a county shop. They did that. It was a 60 by 80, I believe, and it was well over $300,000 for that building. And that was probably on their own property and stuff, too, because they had no wooden shop. And so I think at 193,000 plus acreage, and it comes up to almost an acre there, I think it's well within the budgets and stuff. And again, addressing the safety issues and stuff, too, the need for a shower, different things. And there are going to be some improvements have to be made to this building here, but I think it's within the budget and things, too. But the sounds from the overcrowding other places that it will benefit the county. Also, it will allow some access probably to the county ground back behind there, too, and tie in well. This, looking at the map, this building actually has a little bit of a corner on the county property, so it would tie in well with the other rest of the county property there. And I say, you can have access to that property back behind there, too. Also, there sounds like there are some other departments wanting to utilize that property, so I think it would be a good investment for the future. There is room for other buildings in there and access, too, if you decide to go that way, or the ambulance wants to move out that way. Search and rescue is getting their buildings a little bit older, too. They need a little bit of help there, so it could be traded back and forth, too, on some departments.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. See, none. Franklin, we have the option of voting today to just put on an RFP for an appraiser to come in and just tell us what the building is worth. That would set whether or not we even want to do a one-year lease, potentially with an option to buy, should it work after one year, to purchase outright, or if the price is, the appraisal is far more than the asking price, or far less. These are things that we need to know to even consider this further. What say you? And do you have any other comments?
My main comments are of the people that have called me and all good-standing people, ranch, most of them are ranchers, that are really concerned about this situation. As far as appraisal, I don't think the county should have to pay for any appraisal. If there's an appraisal done, I have no problem with that. But as far as going, any words far as on it, I'm holding to what the stewagers keep telling me.
And what are their concerns?
First of all, the county you buy in the building, you know, feel there's other ways, other things that could be done. That's the biggest thing, I guess.
And what would...
They just want it held off.
They want what?
They just want it held off. They don't want this building. Basically, they don't want the county to own this building.
Okay. And do you have any ideas or suggestions, or have they, as far as how to address the safety issues that we had a public hearing on, the chemical storage issues, the water issues?
Oh, yeah. They've all got comments on that, and I'm not going to speak for all of them. I'm just speaking in general for them.
And I guess I'm asking you, what are some of your ideas on other things we could be looking at that we may have missed in this process?
One thing John came up with a figure on the building, I don't remember what the size of it was, 38,000.
That was a 30 by 40. And that was before, that was just a bid, a couple of bids from the local people, just asking what a building might cost, that concern. He'd have to take into consideration also that the being is for a government, you have a lot more costs involved. I think Davis Bacon Riches had to be paid and different things like that, too. So, and I referred to the shop there in Dots, and it was 80, 60 by 80, it was well over $300,000. So there are more costs involved, and there's some of that, too.
That's another thing, that Forsters building there should be looked into more. When this figure come up from this Great West outfit for 300-some thousand erected, and these are people that understand stuff. I mean, they're, they might not be contractors, the majority of them, but they, well, I'd say they're top business people in their own field, so they think that should be studied a lot more. And I feel that so, too. Dana, I see you're here. One time you thought you had the plans or something for that?
Well, I did somewhere, and I, I can't find them. I've looked for them several times. I can't find them. But now, no, I don't.
This fellow that I talked to, Forsters, he thought he could find them. He went through all this up there in Missoula. But he was familiar with it, and he, he said he could be mistaken. He thought it was 70 by 70 with 18-foot sidewalls is what he thought.
Yeah, I heard at one time it was like 60 by 80.
Okay. It's, it's pretty good size, anyway.
Yeah.
And, but he suggested that evidently where it was removed from, the pad and all, where all the pilings were, you know, pilaster and all that, for the red iron, it would all be there, that someone could go in, they could make a sketch off of that, you know, a blueprint off of that. So I would, that's one thing I suggested, and it's too late, I think, now, because I'm sure it's covered up with snow up there now. This is about a Lincoln area where it come from. And, but I did a, found whether it's preventing, I think, there are several different contractors, and I think it'd be worth to, people want to go up there, look at it, draw a quick sketches, see how that would be. As the way it is now, we can't go on anything really, because I was going to go over and see if there has to be some numbers or a tag on it, probably.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah. But I never did.
Yes, we have two comments. Brian, first.
Brian Hohn, Solidways Supervisor. The Great West report that was done addressed that building. They estimated the cost to rebuild that structure would be a 15% savings for building a new one. The reason that is so high is that building has been laying on the ground for a number of years. All that steel would need to be inspected to make sure it meets building code. We'd have to have an architectural design that has to meet state building code approval. You know, you're in, I'd say, the neighborhood of $20,000 to $30,000 before you even turn a shovel full of dirt. Plus, there are issues with where we would locate that building on that south end of town, with floodplain issues that require significant expense in having ground prepared to build the foundation for it. And I, I don't know if, Franklin, have you read the Great West report?
Yeah.
And you disagree with their estimate on that?
Oh, I do, yeah. And also, they said in there that the Perry Building is going to have to have, well, it sounds like quite a bit of maintenance soon. And then they come up this other figure for $100,000 for this building, and I don't remember what size they had on it. But, and this, this floodplain thing, the whole town of towns is in the floodplain. The only reason they cut it off is they just say, oh, this, this, they wrote it down that it's off, you know. So as far as floodplains, I mean, that...
There's still laws we have to abide by, unless you, as a county commissioner and the executor of the floodplain rules, are willing to let those slide. There's still laws we have to comply with.
Like I say, I think, I think every bit of the town is actually in a floodplain.
You know that for a fact?
Well, I've heard ever since I've lived here. Anyway, there's other things that could be studied and brought out.
Virginia.
Who's Virginia? Virginia, our mosquito district supervisor. I guess that's what I'm looking at is, you know, we're looking at space as far as chemical storage and things. Part of that's going to be climate control. So within the building, the Forsters building, I mean, I looked at that as, okay, you wrecked the building, but you're still going to need insulation, you're going to need a heating system. There's still going to be some major things inside of that that need to be done. It's not just that we're putting up the four walls of a building and a roof, but we're going to have to have additional things inside. And so I think that's where some people, okay, well, just put up a building, thinking of like a shop out at the farm or something like that, that could be a minimal expense. But there's pieces within this that we need, areas where you could allow to have work done during the winter time, or you could have storage of things that are not freezing, that, you know, they're held above that temperature. So I think there's more things that we need to look at. And, you know, when you start putting that, I guess that's what I'm wondering is, within all this, has everybody considered the cost of concrete and what that pad's going to cost, as well as just the building and getting the contractor didn't do it? So I think, you know, there's a lot of different things to look at. The hard part is when we start looking at the building is, it's going to take time to have it put up. It's going to, the time and everything that we have to go through to get it up. The Perry lots in the building right now help solve some of those problems maybe quicker, because you already have some things you could work with. It's not saying that that building's going to be there forever, but maybe if we look at what can we do to make the improvements on it, what could be some things that can be done in the future. I think it has some options for us. And that's where I think sometimes, maybe we have tunnel vision at times that we need to kind of look at, you know, what are the broader aspects? Not what are our needs here three years down the road, but what are our needs going to be 20 years down the road? As a county, if you look at it in our area, we are growing, and it's going to be difficult and harder to find those areas for departments to grow and expand. And so that's where I think, I hope people are looking at not just the short-term, but more of a longer-term aspect.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll give a comment here.
Yes, thank you.
I came in late. Sorry about that. Dog heading her and old weed board. I've been a contractor, too. I looked at the Perry Building. Perry Building has a lot of possibilities. Does it, can anybody tell me how many square feet there are in the Perry Building?
We have a map here that I'd be happy to give you a copy of.
I have one at home, but I forgot. I forgot it, and I don't remember what it was.
There's about 1,600 in the east building square feet, 2,400 in the main building, and I think the office was 200 and some square feet.
Thanks, John. Yes.
So, when you're, when you're looking at that, are you looking at 40,000? I mean, 4,000? I can tell you right now, a very, very minimal cost, not including anything to do with hazardous material, is going to be $100 a square foot. So you're looking at 400,000 dollars. That's minimal. The Perry Building does qualify to have four different outfits if you work in that same building. It does have the water in already. It does have the electricity in already. It has room for expansion outside. It is right here local. It has a setup to where there can be an office there for a person, so that there is supervision over chemicals for the working week, which was not available right now. It's spread out. Mosquitoes, people have theirs in one spot. The weed board has theirs in another spot. It's spread out. Nobody can supervise the parts that are there. I think supervision is an important part with this. I am a rancher also, and I have some rancher friends, and I've talked with them about it, and they're in favor that we should do something like this. And the weed situation is increasing nationally, not just in our little county here. We're kind of on the tail end of things. We're actually behind the times, if you really want to get honest about it. So to catch up with the rest, throw another 100,000 on it, just to catch up, and get equipment that would handle the entire county and handle the problems that we're having. Because every time you're growing weeds, you're decreasing the value of property and everything else. You're decreasing native grasses, if you'll sit down and study it. So I think what the people are looking at here is not something for themselves, but to better the entire county and to better the, the whole situation for the county, for the people that live here, and have our county in a situ, presentable in a way that it would be inviting to other people to come in and be partners with our county. I can tell you just an instance, and you might not think it's connected, but it is, because all things work together. Helen's Farmers Market, we're involved with the Farmers Market, my wife is the market master, decided they'd go with just arts and crafts, you know, and other people with vegetables tricked them in. They now have almost no vendors with vegetables coming in. The last market they had, the Oriental people that came over from Missoula had 2/3 of their produce left. Do you think they're going to come back to that market? No. It's an arts and crafts market. It's not a farmers' market. Down here, we allow arts and crafts, but we encourage the producers of vegetables to come in. Our market is growing down here. We are getting people coming down from Helen to our place. I can tell you right now, there's a lady drives clear over from Park City to buy gladiolias from me. Every year she comes over. It surprises me, you know. Why would you drive that far? But she can get them there. And then she buys vegetables. So do you want the county to have something to offer others, or do you want to always be on the tail end of things? That's my question. And we have something that's available, that's not expensive. I just built a house, and I did it myself. I can tell you what I got in it. And that's not the state code for commercial. So I do know a little bit on this, and...
Thank you. Any other comment? John?
Another thought, too, and I had mentioned it before, that this building could be used as an investment. If you decided you didn't need it or bought some other property, or did you... or to use for the things, it could be resold. I know Gary Fredericks, the realtor, when I dropped the key back off to him, said he had some locals looking at that building, and I think he's shown it several times. So it is valuable property, I guess, in the sense that if it ever needs to be resold or whatever, it could be done that way too. So he is getting some interest on that, that property and things too. So, say it could be used as an investment, and probably worth more money, especially after it had a few improvements and stuff done on it too, in the shop area.
Thank you. And that point has been made before. You're right. Dana, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, Dana, I was, it's been about four years ago, something like that, I had a contractor look at, you know, just trying to get, you know, concrete, just to put the pillars up. You know, we were talking upon that forest service building. We were talking about it one time, trying to just do a, you know, just get the concrete pillars in the ground and, and get the thing up, you know. And I think he quoted me a price of eighteen thousand dollars, just, just for six concrete footage, you know, for the, for the red iron. To me, you know, that's, that's eighteen thousand dollars, I'm thinking, for six pieces of concrete, you know. So in that, right then, I thought, well, I, you know, I'm not even going to mess with it, because you got to get rid of, you know, he told me, he says, he said, he said, I wouldn't even mess with that tin that's there, the tin that's already there. And I'm sure Brian's filled everybody in on it already, but it's all covered with core bond. To me, there's, there's actually no way even using that. You'd have to throw all that stuff away. So then you'd need, you need all new sheets for that building, you know, and doors and, you know, it seems just like a, for what it would cost, you know, for that little bit of stuff, I don't know, that, that Perry Building to me seems pretty reasonable. I, you know, years ago, the county had the option to buy Strong Bradley Building down there. At that time, it's been, I think it was twenty years ago, somewhere's in there. And county had the option to buy that at a hundred fifty thousand dollars with the acreage that's there, where Dale Schubring had put all his trailers and stuff down there. I had heard down the road, you know, a few years after that, that they probably kicked himself in the butt for not buying that. That, that, that's a big building. You know, that, back then though, that was a lot of money, a hundred fifty thousand. So, you know, this hundred ninety-three thousand's a lot of money, but, you know, these guys, you know, with this baler and whatever they got going on here, you know, I don't know, they, they need something. It'll be my opinion, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right.
Really eighteen thousand, of course, that's the biggest part of getting those pilasters in.
Yeah.
On that red iron, that, that's a big part of that building. And I'm like you as far as, I never looked at it close, but that most of that metal, probably just forget about it, scrap that and put new metal on the side.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm, I'm wondering right now, in fact, the same contractor, I asked him about it here not too long ago, and he says, he told me, he says, he says, I wouldn't, he said, I wouldn't even mess with it. And he says, I don't know too many contractors around this town that'd even mess with it. He said, if I was you, I'd load this up and go up on a truck and I'd dig it to Pacific and get rid of it. But, you know, I, I guess if I could get it out of my yard right now, I guess that might be what I could do. But I don't know if I could do that now, because the conditions were when we took it, you know, it was given to us, but you have to, you can't get rid of it unless you give it to some other government entity.
Right.
As far as scrapping, I, I don't know. But that's, that's what he told me, just, it wasn't, three months ago, he told me that.
Okay. Any other comments, Franklin?
Well, as, as far as chemical storage, you've probably got the best thing there is right now is one of those containers. I don't know how good that one's insulated and have a, a good service act controlled heaters in it. And I'm not sure on, on chemicals, because I know on, on fuel anymore, you got to have a containment area. And one of those is, is perfect. You set it there, the forest lab, and come up with your head wall all the way around, and you've, you've got it. And you've got a metal building right there, a steel building, heavier than metal, than metal building that you put up. And I don't know, unless that one's getting a little small, I mean, remember what size it is. But as far as a containment for chemicals, probably the best thing to get rid of.
You know, in a sense, Scott, I'll comment on that. That container's ten by twenty. It's shared for winter use by mosquito and weed right now. It has approximately four inches of spray and insulation. Right now, the only way that we do have to heat it is in an electric heater. That is going to be one purchase that I'll have to do is go get a new heater, just for safety issues. Law does state that we do have to have double containment, anything over X amount of gallons of herbicide. We do have that, but you also pose other threats right now too with that because you're carrying a large quantity. There, it's deemed double containment, but it's not sitting on any kind of foundation or anything. It's just set in there. And it is used for storage of equipment too, so it's congested. Right now, the access into and out of that, if there was ever a fire or anything like that, the best thing you could do is just stand back and let it burn. Then you don't know what kind of chemicals you're going to be, have putting into the ozone. You're not going to know whether that stuff's going to be flowing right out into the, into the water systems or onto the ground or what. So as far as that being the best chemical storage, I'm just not going to comment on that. It's adequate. And that's it. You know, I, I have, you know, people that come to me all the time for recommendations on chemicals and stuff. I do carry a dealer's license. And almost two, three times a week, I have people calling and recommending. I have one place local here that I can tell them to go to. Whereas if I had better storage, I could get around a lot of that, make money possibly for the county a little bit by selling chemical. But the way we set right now, I barely can keep enough chemical to keep me flowing. I'm always having to watch my chemical very closely so that I know how much I need, when I'm going to need it, you know, what kinds, et cetera, et cetera. So. As far as that storage and things like that as a government entity, it was mentioned to me at one point that if deemed appropriate, we could be deemed like five thousand dollars per mishandled container. So when you're looking at a two and a half gallon jug not having the proper space and just leaving it on the floor, not in double containment, five thousand dollars starts to add up when you've got very limited tight spacing. Or bringing it into a facility that's not, that it's not meant to be brought into. So.
Thanks, Scott.
I'm glad you brought that stuff up because that's what, so many have said to me on this spraying situation, the liability with the sprayer and the chemical stuff is, and I think at one time, that was when they first came out this license, is just do away with it, county not being involved at all, contract it all out. Most of it's already contracted out. And just, and that way, the county doesn't have to buy chemicals, store chemicals, have any, any equipment to take care of or any, just, because when they come in, they got their own insurance, they're licensed, and it's got to take care of. And like I say already, seems like we're doing it, we're doing it on the BLM, the Forest Service, and the highways, we're contracting that out already. So, but that's one thing that's been told to me many times here in the last few months.
Any other comments?
Yes, Virginia and then Scott.
We used to contract it out all the time, Frank. And the reason we went away from it because the contractor was not here when we wanted them. They were spraying this time of year when there was snow on the ground. We couldn't get them here when we needed them. And so that's why we went to, went from a part-time manager to a full-time manager, built the program because it was, at that time, we had a task force of the public that said we want this program to grow, we want our own county program. And that's the reason we got involved in building it to a bigger program and expanding it. Part of that then went along with, they wanted to have access to rental sprayers. They wanted to have, you know, to where they could come into the county to rent the, or to get a sprayer to go use on their snow made reach or something like that, or on their pastures, because they didn't have one, they didn't want to go buy one. Well, that was part of it, to build that program. And then in the future here, at some point, I know we talked about it, Scott, you know, and along the areas is trying to develop a cost share program to where we can help people over time, let that be built. And that's when you need a full-blown weed program in order to make this thing work. And I mean, we've spent the years building it, and it was a, a recommendation from the commission to me years ago, it says, what can you do to make this program more effective? And that's when we did, we built the public task force, took it to the voters, and the voters said, yes, we want more. And so I think, to go back to saying we want contract only, we're stepping backwards. We won't have the program, we won't have access to the weed control that we need. We did the same thing with mosquito district. We used to contract that out all the time. We weren't getting the results we needed, because we have one contractor in the area who can do five different counties. He can't be here every night to do the adult society. He could be here in time to do the larva society. So that's kind of same thing. We purchased our own equipment, went to the route to do the adult society because we could control when we need to do it and the timeliness of it. I mean, I'm still working on the larva society side because I don't have a pilot's license. I can't go spray the lake and do different things for larva society, so I have to bring in a contractor. And he's, we're always behind the eight ball. We're never getting it sprayed on time. He's always like two or three days late. And with mosquito hatches, you can't be late because if that water condition is there, that hatch is going to happen. And if you're behind, you're not going to catch up. And that's why I think it's very important that we look at what we can do with our programs to control those things and make a better program here. And I just think, to step back to contractors, we're stepping back in time. I mean, we worked hard on building these programs toward the end. We had the public involved. And I think maybe some of the comments coming in are from those folks who maybe weren't involved in the process to start with, but there's many out there to work on, and will come back in and say, don't change what we're doing. So, I guess he's maybe a little passionate about it. It is, I've been there and I built, helped build this program, and I don't want to see it go backwards.
That's a comment I got, it was from a former weed board person that, and that was a problem, getting it, a person in here spraying. But here in the last few years, and this is where they come back to with me on, was that there's so many private sprayers now, and that it's no problem to-
But there's not. We struggle, because like-
I don't know about the mosquito, I mean, this is on the-
I don't want to speak for Scott, but I know that most weed districts can't contract to go out and do private ground, so we have to find somebody to go do it. We can't find enough people to do it. I mean, there's some folks coming on board, but we don't have enough people that can go out and contract to do private ground. We struggle with that. Scott?
We just held a contract negotiation. We did, threw it out for bid, not this January, but the January before. We had, I think, five qualified bids. Three of them didn't even meet our bid requirements. That left me, and that was statewide. It was open statewide. I mean, anybody could bid that wanted to, that was a legally commercial, legally licensed commercial applicator. We basically had two to three bids that were even look at, look at, to look at. Out of the two or three, I think, three of, or out of the five, I think, two or three of them were bid by the hour, and it was over a hundred dollars an hour. Right in our sealed bid and stuff, we asked not to do hourly. We asked to do acrely, because that's how our contract negotiations go through, like the MDT and the BLM. And so when you're looking at that, you're asking about contract now. I've had a lot of residents here ask for names and numbers and people who to call. I've got basically two names and numbers that I call. And I'll guarantee you, the one of them, he is so busy that he maybe answered three out of thirty, and he told me this himself, three out of thirty phone calls. The other one come in, and he actually came here and thanked me for keeping his name on the list, because he was busy with just private contracts. So try and, even though you see a lot of advertisements for commercial applicators and stuff, not many of them are even wanting to come to this area. For one thing, we don't offer enough funds.
Thank you, Scott. Linda?
I'm going to change the subject a little bit here. In an effort to obtain full disclosure, what will it take to bring the Perry Building to what is needed to store chemicals and have vehicles in there with gasoline and diesel? Evidently, it must take some special something to do chemicals. Is a hundred and three, ninety-three thousand dollars it? Or are we going to go be asked for more?
So you still need a chemical containment, no matter-
To bring that building up to code again.
Does anyone have an answer to that, or shall I call Mike?
Well, actually, you still need a chemical containment, no matter what you do.
That's what I'm asking.
Right. And I don't know about some of the rest of the talking about there, but, plus the other, whatever expensive this Great West is talking about.
We need to level. Is it a hundred and three, twenty-three, ninety-three thousand dollars? Or is it fifty thousand dollars more? Or is it two hundred thousand dollars more?
Good question.
That's the unknown part right there. You're right.
Well, we have a maintenance supervisor. If the answer isn't already known and Scott has his hand up, then we'll certainly call him and have him come up and give us an answer. He has looked at the building extensively. Scott, do you have an answer?
I, I do have a little bit of an answer. It's, we are going to have to eventually upgrade our system, our storage. But the way it sets right now, mosquito has a, a building there also that they could use for some storage. We have some storage area too. The way the Perry Building sets, we could better utilize those facilities that we already have, because we would have shop space to put them inside and more efficiently keep them climate controlled. Plus, you would have the concrete floor that's there as a containment system. So as far as initial expense or cost, I don't believe we need anything. To make things more efficient down the road, we may not get expanding and building a, a better facility, but for this point, we really don't, wouldn't have to because we could utilize some of our stuff-
This is Laura. Can you come up to the courtroom?
My point is that, you know, there seems to be some opposition to this. And I don't think it's right that all of a sudden now, in three months or two months, we're going to come to the taxpayers again and say, oh, we need more money for the Perry Building that you didn't want in the first place. That's my point. If, you know, am I making it clear?
No, your point is, is excellent.
Well, this concrete floor, as far as containment, that's absolutely no containment unless you have another wall inside of that.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, is there not-
That's why that container you have, and maybe you need a bigger one, maybe you need to, I think they make forty, twenty, thirty, forty foot those. But when they're insulated, like I say, it's probably the best containment. Then all you do, you pour your slab, you have your stem wall around it, and then you've got your containment right there. And you don't want it inside the building.
We have Mike coming up. He will have some of those answers for us. The money to purchase the Perry Building will not be one of those that we go to the taxpayers for. We have the money for that at this time. Perrys have at this point offered a five-year-
Perrys have at this point offered a five-year plan to purchase it, and it will be purchased by the three departments that are in need. I would imagine also that the renovations to the building that are needed would be handled by those three departments.
It's still taxpayer money, no matter what, how you look at it.
That is true, Franklin, but what I'm pointing out here is that we are not going to be taxpayers and saying, taxpayers, we need some more money from them. This is money we already have in the different departments' budgets. That's the point that is being made. So Brian, do you want to speak before Mike?
Yeah. Brian Holden, Solid Waste Supervisor. Point of clarification, any money that comes from the solid waste fund is not tax dollars. It is a fee that is collected, let's see, for the service, service of removing your trash.
Thank you for that.
It's the same as a, it's a tax. I mean, the only reason it's a fee because that way everything.
I believe the law says differently.
Mike, I'm going to let you have the floor next. The question came up with the Perry Building. We have the initial purchase price that the Perrys are asking. Today's meeting, of course, is to find out what the details are without the appraiser. But a question came up of what is an estimate of what it will cost to make the changes to the Perry Building for the requirements? And I know you've looked at it before, the chemical storage, equipment storage, shower if it's needed unless they use search and rescue, that kind of thing.
Well, we were looking at doing addition, is that what you're talking about?
Not at this point, just the, just what would be needed for our needs today. The safety needs, the space needs.
Are you talking about putting the showering over there?
No, not yet, probably because we could use search and rescues.
Yes.
But the chemical storage.
Well, like Virginia said, to do a proper storage for chemicals, you're going to have an underground containment, is that correct?
Yeah, well, you need to have a base underneath it.
So we just have, that's the only thing we have to attach to the building at this point, I would think, isn't it? To make it usable for equipments, for a chemical storage.
I want to point out, he was, Franklin mentioned that we wouldn't want that inside the shop. There's already a drain system in that shop.
Yeah, but you can't, these chemicals can't go down through that drain. You've got to have a separate containment, you'd like to have for a few. I'm pretty sure there's a.
It's got to tie in somewhere. Why couldn't you just extend that into that and put a septic system in between that building and where it ties into the sewer system or the septic system or whatever it ties in?
I guess you could run it into a big holding tank already, equivalent of the amount of chemical, and then you'd have to have someone come in and remove that.
They have to come and remove it.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't have it go into sewer.
No, absolutely not.
No, it has to be, you have to, if you have a spill, you have to do a cleanup.
You do anywhere, anywhere you are anyway. That's where I'm saying, you know, you would hopefully be able to catch it before it got to that situation, but at least you're looking at steps on containment. Because the building, the, whatever it is, whether it's a storage containment unit that we already have is one system. We have the pads in there, that's a second system. If you kept it inside on that pad, that would be a third containment system. The way it is right now, we're bare minimum two system. If it, if it gets outside of our building at all, it goes right into the gravel, which goes then right into the water table, which at times can be six feet. If we could move it into a building, onto a pad even like that, the chances of it ever even making it to that septic system or that drain system are a lot less. And I mean, you could put a, you could build relatively cheap, even a metal bar around that, just, you know, concrete screw something down, and you would have three bang, bang, bang containments right there.
So Mike, do you have any idea what, what it would cost to build this containment, concrete containment?
It probably would be concrete. It probably would be a special containment. I've seen them. They're polyurethane.
Especially if it's going inside a building, yeah.
Yeah, you'd want to attach it to the outside of the building, build a small building to attach to the outside so you could put your, dig it out, put your containment barrel in there, and so you can also access it if you had to clean it out. And then do your concrete so that it all slips to a drain, or strip drain.
Yeah, it's similar to any of these places where they have bulk, San Alex, the old conical one there, concrete walls around it. And it has to be, I think it has to hold, like on that fuel anyway, if you have ten thousand gallon storage, you've got to be able to hold ten thousand in that.
That's correct. And it don't have to be a circle drain, it needs to be a strip drain. You can do strip drains too.
Brian?
Are we getting off topic here?
We are, except I do want to answer Linda's question because I think it's a question that has serious merit.
With what Great West looked at with the building and the maintenance concerns they expressed in their, their report, you know, the building is forty years old. You know, every building has to have maintenance done to it periodically to keep it functional. The things that, that we saw when we did that were, there's probably some roof penetrations that need to be sealed that would prevent water from coming inside the building. That was the, the big concerns he saw when we looked at it. You know, that's just general maintenance of a building. It's something that could be used in the negotiation of the price. Anytime you buy a building, you should do an inspection. And we did this prior to that. I wouldn't know, wouldn't call it a true building inspection, but he was a structural engineer that has done a lot of this type of work. He didn't think it was anything to be too concerned about, not like Commissioner Slifka is making it sound. It's just general maintenance on a building that's forty years old. You know, I'm sure there's maintenance things that should be done to the courthouse too. You know, it would come out of our budget and we would take care of it.
But, and thank you for that. So Mike, tell me if this is an unfair question to ask you just kind of off the cuff like this, but do you have any kind of a round estimate on what it would cost to? No, okay. So we're looking at something to, we're looking at something either way for the chemicals. The chemicals as they are today is inadequate and unsafe, period. So we're going to have to either build a containment area for them as they are now or build a containment area for them with the Perry Building. So we can assume that that's probably close watch, or wash. Mike?
I mean, the building's pretty fair, it can be fairly expensive, so is the concrete. It's going to be, I don't know how much a tank would cost. That's my only, don't know.
But we need that anyway.
Yeah, that's the only thing, that's why I couldn't give you a price is because I don't know how much a tank costs.
Okay. Aside from the chemicals, that building's pretty much ready to go, except for an inspection and potential roof leakage. Is that right? Okay. Tom, is that a handout?
No.
Oh, okay, all right. Trudy?
Is, Trudy Southwick, is the power for the baler, did you say three things, power? Is it there at the building already?
It is wired to the building.
Sorry, it is plugged in?
With about a day's worth of electrician time, we could be bailing cardboard.
All right. Sorry, Linda, I think that's as close as we can get to an answer on that one at this time. Tom?
My comment is that each three, three departments have a budget. And I agree that it can be called tax money, fee money, you can call it anything you want to call it, it still comes out of my pocket. But what we're proposing, and I believe that any other two boards can speak for them, I'll speak for the solid waste, is, is we're not asking for any increase in solid waste fees or anything to accomplish this task. That it can be done within the budget. If there's some maintenance needs to be done, it's done with the budget. We're not asking for additional revenue. So the taxpayers, as far as solid waste is concerned, it's going to be ten dollars and some cents a month if we purchase the Perry Building. Okay? And I'll let the weed and mosquito people say, but I think they have, they have money in their budget for maintenance. And so I, you know, they could address that themselves, but I don't see, as far as solid waste, we're not asking for a fee increase to buy the Perry Building. It's my understanding that we're not allowed to buy the building, the county has to buy the building, and then we pay the county for the building out of our budgets. And therefore, there's no mill levies, there's no increase, we're not going to have a campaign on going out and saying, you know, if you have a house that's worth ten hundred thousand dollars, we need twenty dollars more per year. That's not going to happen. Thank you.
All right. Ethan Yales? The other issue is, is it is up to the county by law to get the appraiser for the building. And again, it's not setting a decision, it's just giving us the information we need in order to make a decision. We have to, according to MCA seven dash eight dash two two oh two, appraisal required for certain purchases of real property or conservation easements. Sub A is a distinct, excuse me, disinterested certified general real estate appraiser selected by the county commission, county attorney, and landowner, or three disinterested citizens of the county appointed by the district judge. And then number two, a county may not pay more than the appraised value for the real property or conservation easement. So we do have to purchase a appraiser, and this is so that the public knows that we have vetted the price for a building. Really, today's decision is, A, do nothing, B, vote to go ahead and hire an appraiser so that we have the information we need to make a decision, or C, go with the option of asking the county attorney to put forth three different names to the district court judge to approve as the three disinterested citizens. And I've given all this to Franklin, and there's also stacks of this here if you guys want.
First of all, I guess we should find out how much an appraisal is going to cost and which way we want to go.
We would start with an RFP, so if we were.
Getting what an appraisal would cost.
Right.
Before we do anything.
Well, we need a vote to go ahead and put out an RFP so that we can get that information.
Well, I think we can get that information.
We don't have an RFP yet in order, we don't call an appraiser and say, what's your cost? You have to tell them what it is they're going to be appraising. They come in, give you a cost, and then you tell them, go forth and do whatever it is that they need to do. So first step we need to do, if that is the course that the commission wants to take, is to.
To find what the cost of appraisal would be.
Exactly. We need a vote to go ahead and follow through with an RFP so that we have an appraiser to talk to. Harold's suggestion is we get three different appraisers to respond with prices and then select from those.
Go along with the part that we find out the cost of the appraisal. And that's it.
All right, is that.
And we're not, and we're not giving it to them. We just find out the cost of what the appraisal would be.
And the, the structure for that is we put out an RFP. We want to hear back from a minimum of three appraisers. And the next public hearing will be to have those three bids put forth and we will select from those. We can either, A, select none of them and do nothing, or select from one of those three and move forward. So today's vote is strictly to approve putting out an RFP so that we can get those three There's nothing more to it than that. This is just step one, and it doesn't mean that there's a step two. This is just a way of getting to a point of having information to make an intelligent decision.
And it costs nothing.
Right, there's no cost whatsoever at this point, except for the newspaper ad.
What's an RFP?
Thank you, request for proposal. And essentially what that will be is informing an appraiser that this is the building that we would like appraised. So in order to do that, we do need a vote. It commits us to nothing, it costs us virtually nothing, it's just getting more information.
We also need more information on something besides the Perry Building.
And if you would like to propose something else you would like us to get an appraisal on, that would be more than fine. What are some of the other options you would like to propose?
I don't, I care as long as there's no cost to it, so getting appraisal only on the, on the Perry Building.
There will be a cost for an appraisal, and that's what those three proposals will be.
When we find out that cost, then we'll decide whether we're going to go ahead with it.
Okay, so is that a motion or a clarification?
Clarification, that's all we need to.
Okay. So today we need a motion to just go ahead and take that first step that again costs the, the price of an ad. All we're doing is putting out a request for proposal, an RFP for appraisers to come back to us with their proposals.
A cost.
Right.
A cost.
Is that a motion?
No, that ain't a motion.
Well, we need a motion to have a vote. Thank you, I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to move forward with soliciting an RFP for, hopefully, at least three appraisers to come back with proposals for appraising the Perry Building.
Got no cost to the county.
Step one is no cost, except for, again, the ad.
Right, okay, as long as that's in there.
All those, I think I've done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Or should I go along with it?
Would you, okay, I'm going to take that as an aye for the record. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, thank you, one and all. One other thing that I'm going to ask Mike to stay for, you guys can all stay for this, this is just a little bit of business that needs to be addressed. We have a slider that's broken in the detention center. And we just need to clarify that it does need to be fixed, and I propose that money come from the CIP for buildings.
Is it, is it the electrical part on it?
I think it's the, it's the mechanism above, and even Cooney Locks, these doors are from Texas.
Hey, what's that now?
These doors are from Texas, and Cooney Locks has worked on them before. And so we need to get Cooney Locks in here to go through those sliders with me so that we, I understand how they, I know how they work, but how they, you need to do a bit of adjustment.
Okay, this is the latch and part, this, you don't think it's in the electrical?
It's up in the top. It's not hydraulic, it's a gear driven. And it's on, it's on teeth, and the teeth need to be adjusted. I just want to make sure I have a qualified professional the first time who's worked on them.
I agree with you.
To help me adjust them so that I understand how to adjust them properly. Because Donnie keeps slamming them to get them to work. So I guess that's all, we need to get that taken care of.
Yeah, something's got to be done. I don't know about.
Because it's money that'll come out of PIL, we can either vote today to go ahead and make sure we pay for this, it is on the items for discussion on the agenda, or we can go ahead and, okay, Mike, and just vote for it when it comes through as a claim. Do you have a preference?
Just get it done. We'll take care of it from there. Because it's something that's got to be done.
Yeah, it is.
We'll make sure that that is in the minutes so that when it comes up to be paid for, we have that on the record. All right, any other comments? Oh, just one quick one, Franklin. We discussed this yesterday, or Monday at our meeting. This is the letter to, that we voted on to go ahead and get that floodplain work done. Would you like to just have Elaine stamp the signature, or would you like to change it and have me just sign it since Elena's out today? It was, it had her last name and a spell on it. I gave you a copy on Monday's meeting, and it was emailed out to you prior to that?
Yeah, no, I don't care, just do.
Yeah, I don't care, just to stamp her signature, I guess.
We don't stamp anybody's signature without talking to them. What I want to go for...
Well, I thought it was, she just said it was spelled wrong.
Right, it might still clarify with her.
Okay.
My question to you is, do you want to go through those steps, or do you want to just change it, put my name since I'm here and she's not?
You can just change it if you want.
Okay, then this will go off today. Thank you very much. Any public comments on any other subjects? All right, we need to turn, thank you, it is eleven fourteen. Doug, I'm going to give you this letter from Ann. Ann, if Herb would like to submit a letter, I think we can add that on Monday.
Apparently he has, I wanted to understand when he called, he just called just before I got him.
Well, nobody's received it that I'm aware of.
Hi.
Hi. How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good, I'm Auntie Murdo.
Oh, that's right. Yes. Hi, Auntie.
Nice to meet you.
I am going to call this meeting back to order, sorry Doug. Scott sent, this meeting is back in session. Scott had mentioned it, I totally forgot, I apologize.
That's okay.
This was also an email, Franklin, I'm sure you got it, and basically, there's no decision that will be made since this is not on the agenda, but since these folks are in town, they wanted to just talk to us and update us as to the progress and what you have found with the weed audit so far.
Correct.
So, if you want to come out to these chairs, that would be okay. Is Scott outside talking?
Yes, he was going to grab some other people to come up, so he should be up in just a second.
Very good, I apologize again for forgetting, I have no excuse, just fell out of my brain. It's the snow.
There you go, we'll take it.
And this is Lindsay Carlson, and I'm going to have her kind of do the majority of the speaking and explaining what we've done so far and where we're at, so.
Okay, and there will be a formal exit interview.
Yes.
Side...
Yes, there'll be a formal exit plus then we'll also have a report to the end as well, finding everything out.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
So, so far we've reviewed all the grant files. We were asked to do that, just to make sure that all the expenses were where they were supposed to be, and those look pretty good. So, we noted a couple of problems with the Rocky Mountain Mail Foundation grant, but that will be in our recommendation letter. So, we're at the point now where we've reviewed all that, and we're up to the cash portion of it.
Okay.
So, to determine what your cash balance actually is, or as close as we can get to it, we've kind of reached our point of the 2,000 that we had budgeted in the letter. And so, to be able to look at the cash, we're going to have to go over that, so that's kind of where we're at. So, it's to determine if you want us to keep going or stop.
All right. And we know that it's hoped that we can keep going to make sure that everything is still in line. We're estimating at this point probably another day and a half to get through the cash, depending, you know, I mean, it all depends on what we find too, you know, if all of a sudden we find it's much messier than we anticipate. Based on what we saw in the grants, we expect there to be a few mis-codings and things like that, but we don't expect it to be quite as scary as, you know, it could have been. So, that's why we're thinking maybe a day, day and a half, but if for some reason we come into the, we get, you know, half a day into it and went, wow, this is, this is a huge ordeal or huge mess or something, then we'll immediately, you know, let everybody know that, okay, there's more problems here than we thought. So, that's kind of where we're at and why we wanted to let you guys know at what point we were at, so you can figure out, you know, if you guys want us to keep looking at it and what you want us to do.
Okay. What's your estimate at this point for how much more it will require? You're thinking another 2,000?
Probably about that, yes.
How much?
Just about another 2,000, and actually, it would cost more than that, but my time I'm not going to charge you for. So, any of the time that I've had in it so far, just because we know you guys have a tight budget and this is something that you really need to get done, I'm just going to write my time off.
Well, thank you.
So, and that, so that'll be about, probably about $1,500 that we'll charge you for.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, well, we figured, you know, it's something that needs to get done, and I know you guys, counties have tight budgets, and so we kind of sometimes try to give you a little bit more of a deal.
We appreciate that, so do our taxpayers.
Yes.
So, Scott, do you have it in your budget to cover another 2,000 roughly?
You know, from what I'm seeing and what they've proven, I do believe that I do.
Okay, from what I've seen in your budget, I think you do too, yeah.
That's, you know, that, that would be the one question, you know, is, is, you know, the, it's already been voted on and approved to do the audit, we kind of set a limit, but at this point, do we have the ability to just go ahead and extend that, that contract and extend that, that initial cost? You know, is that something that our department can just say, okay, even though we voted on it, this, this cost, with the department, you know, is that one of them things that do we have to have that through the, the meeting, or can we just extend and say, yeah, go ahead?
Actually, Donnie, our approval at this point, this is material on your part.
As long as it stays within your budget. Something we need to get done. Did you just miscalculate on your estimate to start off with, or?
Um, we weren't quite sure how detailed and how much that was going to be with these grants, when there's grant information and when there's, you know, a lot of different hands and things, it's kind of hard to see what it's going to take. And it, there was a lot of, you know, items that were missing or misfiled, and so it took a lot more time tracking down some of that information, things like that, that you try to assume everything's going to be, you know, here's your grant, here's all the documentation following behind it. And it was just, there was a lot more, you know, back and forth trying to figure out where a lot of that was.
We had to get some grant award letters that were in the files, and that's basically where it is a starting point, so that you know exactly how much money you've got to begin with and what you were supposed to use it for, for spending. So, without that award letter, it's kind of, it makes it a lot harder to piece things together. And there were also, also some accounting coding things that seemed to be a little off, so it took a while to track through that, to match up which expenses with which grant. They weren't separated by grant period, so it took a lot longer to put them in their right place.
Yeah, and you guys had a great contact at Rocky Mountain Mail Foundation that was able to, so we were able to have Scott call them and say, okay, we need these, we don't have copies of them, and so, and we got them, said we probably got it a day.
Oh, excellent, good.
So, that was, that was very nice to be able to get that information, otherwise we would have pretty much been stopped in our tracks, so.
Well, very good. Any other thoughts on this particular subject, Franklin?
All I have to say, get it finished and as long as it come out of the week budget.
This would be an operating expense or a contracted service, and you have line items for that, so, yeah, looking forward to the exit interview, and I really appreciate you doing this. I think one thing that Scott and I talked about yesterday is, this is really something that we should do every time we have a departmental change, just so that that new department head, and we did it for Doug too, when he took over as clerk of treasurer, elections administrator, superintendent of schools.
That's a lovely title.
It is, yes, he was the time head. Yeah, but, you know, it gave him a clean slate, and I think that's important for every new department head to have that, so, thank you for all the work you've been doing.
You're welcome.
It's invaluable to the county and to the taxpayers as well.
Well, good, well, hopefully we are able to get it all straightened out for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
All right, if you need anything from us, just call us.
Okay, we will.
All right.
And we'll be in contact, that's all we'll be, to let you know about, you know, timelines with the exit and everything, with next week being Thanksgiving, I'm guessing it won't be next week.
That's absolutely fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Park, yes.
We will officially adjourn the meeting now for the second time.
Yeah, I think that matter, I think from what I'm understanding, and I have the manager to say, must extend it.
Yep. I'll give you guys my card as well. Wonderful. If you guys can make any additional questions.
All right.
That's all we have to do.
Thank you very much.